Lauren won after Andy Leinburner, who was our former vice president softball coach in the program for many years. As many may know, he passed away suddenly tragically a little over a year ago. So you know, something we'd like to do to honor him. He was a really had a had a really positive presence in the community. And for our program, definitely something I think we have a lot of support for. He's just somebody did things the right way. Not, you know, wouldn't hear bad words said about him. So it definitely something we would like to honor him through that through naming the field. And we would like to install a sign, name the field, Leinburner Field. So hopefully, yeah. If anyone has questions, please let me know. But something, you know, I think is something we have good support for in the community and I think would be a good touch.
Thank you, Jim. I think at this point, like the biggest issue is process, right? So I will, we do have a policy which hopefully somebody forwarded to you, Jim, at this point.
I have seen it, yes.
That, you know, I know you guys have gotten, it sounds like you've got pretty far down the road.
We already dig the hole. Yeah, yeah.
Before realizing that school committee had to be involved. But I'll just share with you, like typically in the past, there might be some like a subcommittee or something that goes on for like months before it even reaches our purview. You know, and during that time, the subcommittee might take in, you know, written recommendations for this person. So we can learn more about who they were and why and how they serve the community. And then the request comes to us and then usually we have a couple of meetings before the policy requires us to have a couple of meetings before a final vote is made. So I think the bigger question for the school committee, and I'll let you all of you weigh in, of course, is process wise, you know, how far do we need to back up to get this rolling for you? And so I'm going to let everybody sort of weigh in with their initial thoughts and and I can share with you also, you know, some of the things I've been thinking. But does anybody have anything they want to share first?
Um, I guess the thing I'll share, hi Jim, good to see you. Is, you know, this is probably the first one of these I think I've been really involved in. I think I was on the committee when we named the football field after Mr. Cunis. But I don't really have a sense of what that process was. And I think it's, it's probably important if we're going to make this decision ultimately to have a good sense of the basis that we've used in the past for naming whatever it's been, whether it's an auditorium, whether it's a field. I don't know that, you know, I think Jim could probably, Jim Adams could probably provide us some history. As to sort of whether there are any parameters or not, whether things have been named only after people who've been affiliated with the schools or not. And so I think an idea of having some form of subcommittee to examine all of that and then come back with a recommendation makes sense. Could be a subcommittee of the school committee, I guess, was what it would be. And I think it's appropriate to include, you know, Jim Gashin or some representatives of the group they're asking for this in that process. But that's kind of, you know, where I think I'd be. It's about knowing more. I fully believe everything Jim is saying, Jim Gashin is saying about the gentleman who they're looking to name this for. I don't feel like I know much about it at all. And I think it's important that we do put it through a process because we have a lot of things that I think are named after people. We also have different ways of recognizing folks. And I'd like to have a better sense of how we've kind of come to those conclusions in the past or taken a vote on this.
Yeah, and just to piggyback on what Mark said, I think, understanding how we arrived at the decisions that were made previously and what kind of precedent we want to set going forward, right? And what, what kind of, because you know, if, if this, if we do go forward and we, and we name this field and, and we give, we said a few reasons, then someone else comes forward and said, I want to name this and that. And, and we have to ensure that the, what we, what we're doing makes sense, both short term, long term and, and and just, you know, and, and hopefully, you know, no matter how it ends up, that it's something we can live with, it's something that, that everyone else can live with. And, and that hopefully, even if it's a different decision that than what the proponent wants, that it's a process that they're part of and that's arrived at mutually. But I think to your point, Mark, about what we've done in the past, but also what we want to do going forward, I think. And maybe that finds its way to the policy subcommittee. So we better define at least some of the guidelines or aspirations of the things that we consider to be important going forward, but.
Tina or Erin, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Not necessarily, but I would support that. I think, you know, the only question in my mind is while we do have a policy around, you know, kind of naming buildings or structures or whatever, it's, it's a little vague in terms of the parameters around who they're named after and, and why and some of that stuff. So I think understanding the decisions that have been made in the past will allow us to be consistent in moving forward and make sure that we're applying that policy the same way every time this issue comes up. And so I think just, you know, I have, I have no objection per se to, to the request. But I think for process purposes, we need to be consistent and make sure we're making the decisions fairly.
Yeah, really want to just uphold the integrity of the process. I mean, I can share a little bit more history. I think I was on, so I've been on school committee for anyone who doesn't know now for, I think it's my 11th year. So I was here for a couple of the namings and I actually was part of drafting this policy in 2012. And I do remember all the research that went into it. And there are some parameters in here. And as you can imagine, it's actually not that easy to define it much more specifically than it's defined here. I'm certainly willing to give it another shot with the policy subcommittee if, if that's what y'all think is necessary. But it does have some naming principles right within the policy. You know, consider historical figures, considering the contribution to the school community and that sort of thing. There are some guidelines here that have been applied to other requests. And those are the kinds of things that have typically been applied at the subcommittee level. And the policy itself also calls for who is on the subcommittee, three members of the community, two school staff members, maybe perhaps one member of town government. I mean, it's a big deal, especially when you're naming property. I mean, I will tell you, Jim, it's been, so we've named one field, I believe, since I've been on in all those 12 years. And that was after Mr. Cunis, who had been like a 25 year employee of the school and a coach and so forth. So that's the only sort of big naming. But other than that, the things that have been named have been like benches and paths and, and things like that. And I think those processes have been just a little simpler. I do remember the one for the football field was months long and there was a lot of investigation. And, and again, the reason is so that it just protects the integrity of the process, you know, moving forward. So I guess the, what I need to hear from the committee is, are we following, you know, what's recommended in this policy about who's on this committee? That will then take all of the letters and comments and so forth. And then what happens, Jim, in that committee is they come out with a recommendation usually. I mean, there, it's been a no before with some requests. So it's either a no, it's a yes to your specific request, or it's not your specific request, but we would be happy to have some kind of memorial of something, you know, that's not a field or a building. So those are the three kind of answers that would come out of subcommittee. And so, you know, Paul, you mentioned policy subcommittee, Mark mentioned a subcommittee of the school committee. This policy calls for a committee with certain members. So what's process wise, I mean, we do have a policy that pretty much guides what, unless we're looking to redo this policy before we take another step.
I mean, just as Paul, just, you know, relative to the policy, current policy, it does not require a subcommittee.
No, it does not require a subcommittee. But if we're now saying that we want more information from a subcommittee, I guess what I'm asking is, what do you all want that committee to look like? Do you want it to just be met subcommittee of members from this committee? Do you want it to be what the policy suggests? Or did you have something else in mind?
Laurie, I was, I was really contemplating the committee that's identified in the policy.
Yeah.
That, that's really, I know, it's a subcommittee of the school committee. I think that that, that's what I was thinking about when I said that, was following the policy. Because I think we're all talking about a process, right? And being consistent that if we have a process that's been in place that we've adopted as a policy of the school committee, we want to follow it. You're right, you're right in saying that the policy says, you know, you can kind of go path A, which is that, or just come right to the school committee. But given, given a lot of us are asking kind of the same questions, it seems to me that, that using the policy that's, using the committee that's formed by the policy is the appropriate way to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll say the one thing I think is a little bit odd is that the subcommittee has no members of school committee on it at all.
Yeah, I thought that was strange too, Paul. For whatever reason, it was established that way.
Well, what they do is that they do all the investigation and then they come back and make a recommendation to us. I, I'm sure if somebody wanted to be on it, it would not be refused, I don't think. But I think the idea was that because there are so many different represent, people represented on the, on the subcommittee that by time the request came to us, that's where I'm having the issue, Jim, is not that I don't even have too many details on this person. Not that I doubt, you know, that they were fabulous and contributed and all that. But usually by time the request comes to us, they've done, you know, all the homework. So a whole group of people, and so they make their presentation and based on who's on the committee in the past, we've, I think we've pretty much accepted their recommendation. So that's, I think, you know, it's, it's a little bit tricky here because of how far down the road you've gotten. And I feel badly about that. But I feel if we don't back up and start over, then especially with such a major ask, that, and, and also it says right in the policy that the decisions, especially when it comes to buildings and fields are permanent, that I would want to go to the beginning of the process and let that unfold. And I'm personally comfortable without a school committee member on that because again, it's, you know, enough people from different perspectives that I will trust the recommendation. But if somebody wants to be on it, I don't have a problem with that either.
I think, Laurie, we, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say that all sounds good and fair and I understand the due diligence and makes sense. Just trying to understand what the next step, you know, for me would be, is there a, where do I plug in here? You know, that's kind of, I'm asking, participate in this or do whatever, you know, would be helpful. But yeah, I'm just looking for some clarity, I guess.
Yes.
Laurie, can I suggest something? You know, maybe the way to do this within the framework of the existing policy is to have one of our school committee members be the community, one of the three community representatives have Jim or a couple of people from that group that are asking for this be the other community members. And then I think it's two staff people after that, right?
Yeah, which Jim can appoint.
Right. And that way, you know, that, that also might give the group as a whole a little bit of a sense of what the school committee is thinking and give voice to, to the, the points that we've raised, make sure those are addressed in the work of the committee.
Is everybody okay with that process? Yeah. So I think what would happen, Jim, and, and a day or two or whenever Mr. Adams returns, he's not at the meeting tonight because he's out of town. I will tell him that it's time to start that subcommittee. One of us will be on it and I'll, I'll take volunteers in a minute. And you can be on it if you have the time and/or you can have a representative of yours be on it. I would imagine Jim would appoint the other staff members and maybe that might be you, Chris. Or, you know, I, I'll let that, I'll let you guys work that out. And so the subcommittee would then have a first meeting. And, and then probably what, what your job would be is to start putting in writing or having like your people sort of put in writing why there's a belief that this person is worthy of the, of the request, what they contributed, for how long, all that sort of thing. And then the subcommittee will determine whether or not that's one meeting or more than one meeting. They'll make a decision. We'll put it on our agenda when that committee is ready to report out. And then, and then we just, we have to, we have to have two meetings to vote on it. So we have one meeting where there's a presentation of what the subcommittee found. And then on the second meeting, we would vote yes or no.
The one thing I'll just want to qualify and maybe add to that is the process for community members to be on there is defined in the policy. So I'm not sure we can say that Jim can be on or not. It says that if there's more than, than three community members, that then it'll be chosen by lottery. That Jim will have a screening process to think that, to say whether they're appropriate to be on or not. So I just don't want to, if we're going to go by, in essence, that portion of the policy, then
Right.
I'm not sure we can say, hey, Jim, you're going to be, you're going to be on or not. But, all right. So I just want to set the right expectations.
Right. But what, what you would do, Jim, and what the, whatever school committee member wants to be on it, we would make, make a formal request in writing to Mr. Adams that you would like to sit on the committee. And that what he'll probably do is send an email out to the community saying, you know, there are three spots or however many there are on this committee. And, you know, if, depending on how many replies there are, we'll pick by lottery, I guess. It doesn't mean that you can't come to the meetings and make your presentations. In fact, they will be looking to, if you're not on the committee, you will be a big part of presenting to them. Because how else are they going to know what, what the request is and understand it? So I would be looking just for, we'll communicate this to Jim Adams and that he'll give you a shout out in a couple of days and just give you a better idea of the timing.
Okay, wonderful. Yeah, that's great. Thank you very much.
Okay, everybody good with that? And before you go, is, do we have any school committee member that just hasn't an intention of writing to Jim and volunteering to be on the committee?
I would do that.
Okay.
Have had a prior connection to YBS a little bit and would be happy to do that.
Excellent. Okay.
I will volunteer and I guess, given what the point that Paul's raised, I may be excluded by lottery too. But I will, I will certainly respond to Jim asking for my name in the hat.
Okay, excellent. All right. Thank you, everyone. It sounds like we have a way forward.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. All right, thanks.
Okay. Next up, we have approval of the student activity clubs and accounts. Who is presenting that? Anybody? Do we have documents? I don't have the documents in front of me. I just have the agenda from the town site. Does anybody have documents that require a motion?
No, I actually, I'm looking, Laurie, I didn't think that that was, never seen that on the agendas. I looked earlier today.
Number two. So if nobody has documents or a motion, or there's nobody here prepared to present anything, we'll move on to the next.
I mean, there's, there's a motion in there, but, but I don't think there was anything in the
Submitted.
I'm just looking at, I'm just looking at the, the stuff.
I think there was some details that, that Karen had sent off that had the backup for student activity clubs and accounts. I'm just looking at the, the detail that we have.
Yeah, if you can find that, Chris. I mean, if it's just a matter of us making a motion to get that done and you find it.
Yeah, I mean, I still supporting a detail that she said, that, that was sent with this.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to, um, how I articulate that to you is a kind of a different story. Hey, with me just for a second.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have the listing of all the accounts, but I don't, I'm unsure what the, if we are need to approve all of these amounts or what, what we need to do with it.
We had it on the last meeting, you know, but somebody gave us a little blurb about it and then we made a motion to, you know, accept the information as presented. But
Yeah, so I, I found the, the backup. Yeah, so it's just the list of those. And the motion is to approve the clubs and activities accounts as presented. So we have, each year we approve them. And then we have a second motion to authorize the building principals or their designees to administer them, basically.
I think this is just a requirement that we annually approve these things.
Yeah, yeah. I can, I can share it here on, so I'll share it. So this is the list of the accounts.
Okay.
So these are all just the club accounts. And essentially, this is just something we do every year.
Right.
Proves the, the accounts. And then we have a motion that allows the principals to manage, so deposit and withdraw from the accounts.
Okay, well, at this point, we've all seen them. So if anybody has any concerns, now's the time. But if not, we can take a motion to approve them as presented.
So moved.
You have a second?
So, so, so this was the, this was the motion that was written in.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Paul.
Motion to approve the FY22 student activities, activities, clubs and accounts as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
And all in favor, Paul?
Hi.
Tina?
Yes.
Erin? Mark? An eye for me. Thank you. And then Paul, there's a second motion?
Yeah, to authorize the building principals and their designees to receive and disperse student activity funds in accordance with the school committee policy.
Second.
All in favor, Erin? Unmute, please. Thanks, Tina.
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Mark? An eye for me as well. Okay, thank you. That is done. The policy updates, continuation, second reading, JFABD, homeless students, enrollment rights and services. The policy subcommittee, I don't think, has heard from anybody with concerns about any of these policies that we had the first read on. Paul, did you hear from anyone?
No, I assume Kathy, there's not been any updates or anything from your perspective on?
Okay, so with that being the case, I think we can just go through these one by one and approve the policies or not, depending on how you all are going to vote. So who's got the motion to approve JFABD homeless students enrollment rights and services?
So moved.
In a second. Thank you. All in favor, Mark?
Okay.
Tina?
Aye.
Paul?
Hi.
Erin? Aye. And then JFAB, motion to approve admission of non-resident students.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Paul?
Hi.
Tina?
Aye.
Erin? Mark?
Hi.
An eye for me. Motion to approve JFABE educational opportunities for military children?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, Tina?
Aye.
Erin? Paul?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
An eye. And then JFABF, this would be a motion to approve the educational opportunities for children in foster care. And second, all in favor, Erin? Tina?
Aye.
Paul?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Aye, for me. And then the last one, BEDH, public participation at school committee meetings.
We have a little conversation on this one?
Yeah, we hadn't had a converse, a full conversation on that one, yeah.
Okay, let's converse.
And, and the one that went out this time was the MASC version, right?
Yes. Yeah. Mark, did you have a chance to, to take a look at the most recent?
Yeah, I did. And it, I mean, the things that, I don't know if this was a specific decision that the subcommittee made or just something we need to talk about now. But one of the things that's included in here is that we sign up, we ask people to sign up for an opportunity to speak, which we've never done.
Now.
And I'm not opposed to that or in favor of that necessarily. But if the subcommittee was recommending this, I'm wondering whether there was discussion on that. Thought this was a good idea. Or whether it's just like it was in the form. So, yeah, applying.
It was in the forum and there was no discussion about it. And I would vote no, just because we're still working on Zoom. So it's really not practical. And, you know, we never have enough, so many people that that's become an issue, that the one big meeting that we had with a number of people, I, I didn't find that that was necessary. So I just, just take it out of the policy unless somebody was coming.
I felt that way as well. And there's preference, the first sentence of paragraph one, and then also in paragraph six, but there's reference to that procedure. So I suppose take that out. The other thing I noted in paragraph two, there's a sentence there that says, presiding chair may permit extension of this time limit in extenuating circumstances. I think we probably also want to include that in paragraph one so that we're not always limited to the public comment for 15 minutes.
Yeah.
Right? So that I think should be in both places. And then the last comments I had were in paragraph five. It talks about written comments, written comments longer than three minutes. I think let's probably contemplate theirs, if you want to talk for more than three minutes, put it in writing. But I thought it was just easier to say written comments may presented to the, be presented to the presiding chair, take the, the time reference out. And it's not clear in this, and I don't know if we need to be, but I don't think the intention in my mind would be that we would read those comments, but simply maybe acknowledge them, include them in the record. Or as I think has been more common in the past, the, the chair would just forward those to everybody for the review. But it isn't necessarily something that's even, you know, considered as a part of our open, or the minutes of our, our meeting or anything like that. Otherwise, I just take grammatically that last, that paragraph five probably is three separate thoughts and they might want to be separated. Those are the comments I had on it.
So, so I'm, I'm sorry. Where did this, what was sent out, get, come from? It could be, I'm looking at the MASC master set right now and it's not what that is. So that, that's
I'd have to defer to the, I'd have to defer the subcommittee, Paul. Which is, which is you, Laurie.
The subcommittee, we, we talked about
Would be you and me.
Which was adopting the MSC, MASC version, which is their master set, which doesn't have any of the things he's concerned about. So I
Did somebody provide that to Karen as she distributed the materials to us? And she maybe, I don't
Yeah, I mean, hold on a second. Let me, I'll, I'll show you, you'll immediately see that it's much, it's a much simpler policy. This is the, this is the MSC master set right here. So it doesn't, it, it, it's very much, it's a lot simpler. It doesn't have that 15 minute thing you mentioned. I was looking at that and I didn't know where it came from. But then I opened up what came in the backup. And so we might want to plant this and get better, get a better understanding of, of these.
Where that came from? Like, is that a more recent version of this?
This, this is going to, you know, going to MSC's master set in the policy database, right?
Yeah, but, but the other one came from somewhere too. So which one is more current?
Well, I mean, this is their online policy database.
Right.
I'm assuming this is the, you know, this is where people can go and reference their master set, which has the, the changes.
Yeah, it doesn't include some of the things I've commented.
So
I would, I would move to refer this back to the subcommittee for further deliberation.
Well, I was just going to ask, I mean, Paul and Laurie, as the policy subcommittee, which one were you, were you intending to present to the committee? Because if it's this one we're looking at now, can we look at it and discuss it now rather than?
Yes, this, this is the one we worked on in the subcommittee. And, and I think, Mark, the only point that you bring up would be kind of the last one about the written comments. I mean, it's not our practice to read written comments. I know I've watched other school committee meetings and other communities where they actually read into the record every letter that they receive. And that might be what that's referring to. This committee does not do that. I do forward, you know, the chair forwards to every member and now you get them directly. So we all are aware of the comments, but we do not read them into the record.
Yeah.
Yeah, sometimes they get posted in a central place, but
So what, what concerns me about this policy is it still retains some of the things that have been deemed to be improper based on the Natick decision we talked about.
And, and what I'm looking at now isn't what, so let's, let's table this and come back with
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry about all the confusion. I, I'm not sure what, where the problem is, but we'll, we'll gather. Again, we will come back to you with one policy. We've already heard, you know, what, what you're looking for. So hopefully we'll be able to get that taken care of and come back to you for a vote.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry about that. I did not look at what came in the back.
I, I didn't look at what came in the, in the packet either.
But even what I just looked at, then when I, when we originally looked at it in, in the, in the subcommittee, it addressed, had the, this looks to be an old one too. So
Right. It's like a new one into the mix. I thought all we were doing this time was just getting the updated one, you know, from the
Oh, hold, hold on a second. I, I think I got, I got there wrong. I think this is our current one. Hold on.
That's our current policy and we're looking to replace it with the MASC policy. But Mark's saying the MASC policy is still not legally accurate.
No, no. No, no, the, the, I, I just have to get to a, a different way. That's, that's all.
Well, let's you and I do it, Paul, uh, with the subcommittee, and then we'll come back. So we don't waste everybody's time trying to figure this out right here.
Um, hold on. This one's the right one. Okay. Um. Let me just, let me just show you real quick. And I can send out the, the link to it as well. It was just how I got to the, uh, got to it that showed ours instead. But this is the MASC, um, version.
Most recent.
Yes.
So do people want time to absorb this? Or do you want to take care of it now?
But this, this, this does have that, that fifteen minutes in there. Okay.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, this looked just like what we were, what the, we were given in our packet, so.
Okay, my apologies.
Okay, so Mark just raised his concerns. If, if we all agree on all those things, then we can vote it as amended.
But so.
I, I agree with Mark's feedback.
Mark, do you have a, do you have a marked up version or?
I'm only, only in, um, hand, but I can get that to you. You want, why don't we do this? Why don't I give that to the, to the subcommittee? Um, as a draft, you guys take a look at it and then, or, or we can just take it up at the next meeting as a markup of this. Just because there are enough changes, I think it's probably better that we all see it clean.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, so send it over. We'll, we'll redline it and.
Okay. Okay, I can get that to you.
Yeah, sorry for the confusion.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone. Okay, uh, continuing on, I think it's, uh, our third meeting, so hopefully we can wrap up the school committee goals this evening. Um, we started last week. I think Tina had some suggestions and Mark had a working document that we've all taken a look at. Uh, who's got some, uh, additions or subtractions or comments?
Oh, I have some thoughts in, in kind of where I've been struggling with this is kind of the process around it. Um, because usually when I'm reviewing goals or crafting goals, I look at the most recent old document. Think about where we are, how we've met, what we need, may need to tweak moving forward, or any new priorities to add going forward. Um, and, uh, from what I can tell, there's not, there hasn't been a, a very recent written school committee goals document to really look at and say, where are we now and moving forward? And so I'd like to just for a minute, kind of discuss the process. And, you know, kind of what is our schedule for reviewing these and what should it be moving forward? And, you know, kind of, you know, my own thought and proposal would be, obviously, you know, there's an annual discussion where we talk about our goals. But I think in order to make sure that we're, we're, we're referring solidly back to those goals that we set and, and using those as an accountability tool to, to, you know, look forward in terms of how are we doing in, in meeting those goals? And also for the community to be aware of what our school committee goals are, so that they can give input and kind of, um, you know, feedback in terms of, of how we're proceeding on them. So I'd like to kind of talk in, in, about setting a, a more concrete process and really kind of making sure that there is a document that's updated, even if it stays the same, you know? Um, if we look at it and say, these are all things that we're still working on, but maybe we need to tweak, um, you know, some minor details, uh, to just make sure that there is an annual document that's, that we can have on our website that, that the community can share and that we can refer back to, because obviously our goals are, are part of the building block for, for the goals of, you know, of each of the buildings, of the superintendent and whatnot. And so I think it's important to make sure that we have something, uh, to look at.
Anybody? I mean, what I can tell you, Tina, I know we've been having trouble finding a document. Last year, we definitely did not do it because we didn't. Summer retreat.
Yeah.
Um, I can't remember a retreat where we didn't talk about goals. I mean, we have been talking about them every year, and I think my best memory is that some years we have, uh, decided that we're working on the same things, like SEL has been a goal for a long time, communication's been a goal for a long time. We've had, uh, the budget goals have been fairly consistent. Um, so it may be like dates on the thing didn't get updated. And I think what also may have happened at least once um, is that what's happening right now is that we talked about it, talked about it, we couldn't finalize it, moved it to the beginning of the school year, and then life happened. Uh, and we might not have like put the final touches on it. Um, but at least I have felt that we've every summer, except for last summer, we have spent good time in discussion, giving the superintendent direction. But certainly I agree that, you know, it should be on our website. There should be, it should be clear and but that is the process, is that during the summer is when we dive into that. More often than not, we don't finish that conversation. So I think the, you know, the trick really is to make sure we finish it like, for instance, tonight. Um, get clear on what the goals are and have it posted on our website. And that's the way that it should work every year, unless somebody has a different understanding of how it's been working.
Yeah, I know, I, I, I think that's not to use the word too much. I think that's the goal is to, is do what you just said, right?
Yeah.
I think where I've always struggled with it is, um, i- is it a, is it, is it a list of goals? Or is it a li- list of, uh, you know, thematic pri- priorities, right? Uh, because there's goals that we can do as the, the school committee, but we end up always getting in the weeds of things that are actionable things by um, the employees, right? You know, the administration or the teachers or, you know, th- those things where, uh, you know, so it's gotta be a blend. That, that's where I think we've, we've struggled to, you know, land it is that, that balance of what is, what is a goal for us? What are things we can do as a group? Because we're, we're our, our scope is limited, right? We're, we're not a curriculum group. We're, you know, a policy of funding and a, and a, you know, and, and administrative group for the superintendent and, and a couple of other positions, right? Um, and, and the fiduciaries for, for that and the, and the contracts. But so I always think the goals are like, okay, there, there's some that are, uh, we need to label as um, directional and thematic, right? Uh, ensuring that SEL is a priority. That, that is, you know, aside from funding things and, and stuff like that, that's a that, that's just a priority statement. But there might be things that are very important to us as a group that we need to do. Um, and those would be more like goals. And I think we've always struggled, at least the conversations that I recall. parsing that out. And, and, you know, one of, one of the things and, uh, i- is, I'm probably more of the, hey, let's make it thematic. And all those, one of the, one of the things in, in the working document we have has nine sub bullets, right? Um, and that's excellent detail that I think finds its way into some of the other things we do. Like goals for Jim, the blueprint and actionable things by others. Um, but how do we, yeah, I think, I think we've always struggled at that.
Yeah. I mean, I did some research on it on the earlier days. I mean, this is really meant to be very big picture and letting um, the superintendent and the district know what we prioritize. And because there are a lot of guiding documents, right? There's the, the district strategic plan, which is really the one that really breaks it all down. Who's going to do what? What's the timeline? How are we going to measure success? That's, that's a strategic plan. And then there's, you know, the goals that we want Jim to achieve on a yearly basis. This year, we want you to X, Y, Z. And, and again, by this date, what are the measures? What's the evidence? And from the school committee, um, perspective, it's more about like policy and direction and priority. And so I think part of the reason, um, when you have a lot of people who have been working together year after year, um, and we kind of already know that we share the same priorities, and we know that they are reflected in the superintendent's goals as well as the blueprint. Uh, we haven't gone too crazy worrying about, you know, what's the school committee goals say. And having said that, um, I think it's important to be clear about what those priorities are. And, um, but I'm not for like the seventeen page goal document with all the sub, you know, headings. I, I am for making it as um, you know, broad sort of policy priorities and let the administrators work out the details.
And I would agree with you. I don't think a seventeen page one is necessary either. Um, you know, I think there's a happy medium.
Yeah.
And, you know, one of the things that has been a priority of the district for, and the school committee for a long time is, you know, kind of that communication and the connection with the community. And, um, it's, it's really hard for the community, frankly, to, to look at the school committee and say, what are your goals as a school committee, right? Because we don't have them on our website. It's not something that. And so I think that that's an important thing, uh, an important document for us to put together, whatever length we decide on, whatever level of detail we feel needs to be present. Um, you know, but, but the other thing I think is, is also setting goals for ourselves, right? I think in terms of, I, one thing that I think is, would be really important, um, and while we don't necessarily have that day-to-day decision of choosing curriculum or, or, you know, making hiring decisions for teachers, right? Like, I think it's really important for us as a school committee to understand what goes into choosing a curriculum, right? Like what, what are the, the, the proven or research-based methods to do certain things for our own understanding? So that we can ask the right questions in terms of evaluating how, um, you know, how programs are being run in the district as well as so that we can evaluate what is a, a reasonable expenditure for our budget? Like, are we making the right choices in terms of how we're spending money? And so I think, you know, certain, um, you know, kind of goals around enhancing our own understanding, um, of, of different things, I think would be, would be important. Um. So that's certainly another thing that I think is, is
Yeah.
Kind of a big picture to address as well.
So I would be for that, Tina, as long as it's not duplicating something that's already happened. So for instance, like when we went through that process before, like Jim has had on his goals, review, you know, the literacy curriculum, review the math curriculum. And so, and then what he's then done is had his curriculum directors do maybe a years-long study. And that during that period of time, like Paul Viera would regularly, for instance, present us with updates on what groups he was getting together, what findings, um, they would tell us something. It wouldn't be like we get to budget day and they'd say we need a hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, absolutely. Yes. And I guess my thought is actually a little bit outside that process. So not, because, because that happens. And obviously it's an important part of any curriculum decision. And I'm not thinking that we each necessarily, you know, um, receive training on a specific curriculum that's being recommended, but just more of a big picture of how some of these decisions are made, so that we can ask the right questions. You know, I have, I have a, a ton of faith in our administrators. I don't think they're making poor decisions by any stretch of the imagination, but I think it's important for us as school committee members to be able to ask the questions that we understand where all of this fits in.
And it, it, it looks like Mark's been trying to chime in there a few times.
And I'm, I'm listening. I know, I know Tina and Lori are gonna go for a while. Um, no, I just, there are a couple of things I think that I do want to clarify. And one is, um, the, the last goal document that we had on the website, I think was a year out of date. Um, we had decided not to update it, but it did get lost when the new, new website was put up. So it's not there anymore. And, and so I think it is something that we have maintained. Um, there was a point at which there was, was a draft document up there, but I think that eventually got removed. So I, I think in terms of how we've communicated that, that to the public in the past, we have done it. Right now, we are not, because I, I don't know, I, I think, I assume, I should say, I don't know. When we did the new website, sort of the idea of putting up the old goals when we're gonna be redoing them um, or potentially at least looking at them, didn't make any sense, but I wasn't involved in that. So so I think it's just important for historical purposes, or, and so we have, we have maintained goals on the website where people can see them. Um, the other thing I'd just say is, to the extent that conversation's being generated at all about for level of detail by, you know, the draft documents that, that I had put together. Um, you know, I would say that, um, if you, I don't know, folks have that in front of them now, but there were, there really were eight goal statements, three, three or four, which really were just sort of almost value statements. There weren't, they weren't things that were to do, like, um, uh, negotiate collective bargaining to support a vision mission goals. Like, it was just a broad statement, and we're not even doing much collective bargaining this year. Um, but I think the, the reason why I added all the, the letters underneath the specific ones was really to just make to give us thought about how we were accomplishing our goals, not that they would be included as, as our goals. Those, those certainly are, are like to-dos. But kind of to the point that we're talking about of, you know, sort of what's our role in these things. Um, each of these things was at some level, things that would ultimately be i- in our purview, uh, at like a review level, budgetary level, curriculum, uh, review level. Um, and I'm, and, you know, we haven't, I don't think we've really had any substantive discussion about those statements. But if we were talking about any goal statement, I think at the level of the number, you know, where, for example, the first one just says, develop, update, maintain policies that support equitable education for all students. That's what I, I would see as a reasonable goal statement.
Right.
Um, and then the A, B, and C that are under there are more or less to sort of say, okay, how are we gonna do that? But I don't think those are goal statements themselves, or nor should they be included in it. Um, so, but I think, you know, I, I agree with your general sense, Lori, and I think, you know, yours as well. Uh, you know, we don't want a seventeen-page document, um, because nobody's gonna read past the fourth line anyway. So I think, you know, having four, maybe five goal statements that are in the range of as short as what I just read, whatever the substance, substance may be, is the right level to work at. But I think we are at a point where we need to kind of decide what those three, four, or five statements are going to be. Um, put it to rest, and then certainly have discussion about is that we as a committee think we should be doing um, in furtherance of those goals. And, you know, use Tina's example of, you know, if we're asking, um, for something to be done related to curriculum, it's not our job to specifically evaluate, but it may be our job to better understand. Um, or to be in a better position and more informed than we are, so that, uh, use Tina's example, if there, if you don't even know what questions to ask other than, you know, what's the recommendation of the curriculum director? Maybe that's fine, and that, that we just want to be that deferential and, quite frankly. More often than not, I'm gonna be convinced that those folks know a lot better than I do. Um, but I think it's if there's a way to educate ourselves, make sure we're doing a better job in how we spend the district's money, I'm all in favor of that. Um, so, you know, I, I don't think we're far off in terms of sort of the, the level. Um, and, and Erin hasn't had a chance to speak yet, but I think we ought to sort of get on to the, the business of what are these goal statements gonna be and, and adopt them and, and, uh, start achieving them.
Erin, do you have any thoughts you want to share? Not to put you on the spot, but I wanted you to have your chance to talk also.
Oh, thank you. Um, I'm, now that I'm recollecting, Mark, so I remember when we did like the very formalizer, it was almost like I sort of brought in like the GE goal, you know, fifteen-word statement. We boiled everything down, like it was one of, like the first couple of years that I was on, we had this. Uh, uh, I would say, I don't want to call it a tighter rigor, but I, I think we were a lot more formal in the documentation. And it was on the website. And then I do remember when Gina and I were working on the web, website redo. And then the new version didn't come on, and then obviously that's true COVID. So, um, yeah, that said, I, I want it high level enough that it's really digestible for the community and also for us. That it's a quick reference, and we don't need to go through thirteen bullet points of, that we, um, that we need to address. Um, but at the same time, let's not spend too much time on it, because I don't, the same reason why I think we've been able to be lax is a benefit that we have and are going to continue to have with all of us that are on the committee, plus Jim. You know, there was a time there where we didn't know if, um, Jim might be going to a different districts, where I think that might have been more, um, important for us to focus on it, but I'd rather focus more at the, on the, uh, other strategic initiatives rather than just documenting that.
So to get this done, what do you guys think about going just like through the document? Like, for instance, could we agree like develop, update, and maintain policies that support an equitable education for all students? Is like the sentence that we can have on the goal document, and we can get rid of the subcategories underneath, with the understanding that it's the intent to focus on some of those things, but not to the exclusion of other things.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah. Well, you know, I, I would suggest maybe to, to use that as the basis and maybe just beef it up with a little bit of extra language to include some of that stuff. Like, you know, to look at it like developing, develop, update, and maintain policies that support an equitable education for all students, including becoming an anti-racist district, um, you know, kind of a, a, a not, not necessarily list them out, but, but add some additional detail based on some of the, the, because I would agree with these other things. And specifically when it comes to, to this point, right? I think this is an important policy point that we make as a committee to say that not just are we supporting an equitable education for all students, but that we are committed to becoming an anti-racist district. I think it's important for us to say that. Um, you know. I think it's important for us to say that, um, you know, and that we are committed to, um, you know, to making sure that, that all students, um, you know, from, from different, uh, you know, affinity groups and whatnot, feel comfortable and welcome in our schools. And so it's, some of this I think is important for us to say, uh, because it's important for those that, that may need to hear it, to hear it from us as well too, to know that that's part of our priority.
Yeah, I, I guess my only concern is, is when you start listing, who did you forget, right? Uh, anti-racist, what about LGBTQ, uh, what, and it's, all those are important, right? Um, and so I'm always concerned that who, who are we, who are we excluding in that list? And even though we said equitable, we tried to be general, like to your point about wanting to hear it, well, we're gonna miss someone. I'm, I'm just concerned about that. Um, but it, and feel free to shoot me down. If, I'll just throw out that I like the first four. And, and I think those are the ti- higher, highest priorities in that list of, of statements. I mean, like, we need to shrink down the, the top level first, right? And then we can dig into each one, but the, the first four, I think are, this, this kind of looks to me like it's in a, and I don't know if you reorganized a market and, and maybe did, and that's why the first four, which are the policy one, um, the curriculum one, um, the one about retain, you know, developing, retaining staff and, and communications that, based on all of our conversations, those are the highest four priorities of the list that we have right now, at least from what I said, from my, from where I said.
Yeah, and I, when I looked at it again today, Paul, those are the ones I had circled as well. I think the rest of them are, are more of sort of value statements, guiding principles, and they are specific goals. And I think if, um, we're talking about what do we want to accomplish this year as opposed to sort of what are the things we look at over the long term? I think the first four are the things that, that I would focus on as well. Um, so I, yeah, like I said, I, I, um, I think the other ones I added because they were things that I did find in an old document that I thought were still.
Yeah, we've always just kept recycling.
Yeah, there, there's just some, some things.
But it's like what we do anyway, like be physically responsible with the budget, advocate for students, those kinds of things. But these are more sort of priorities for now. And Tina, I do agree. I mean, I think because I, I would imagine, you know, with Jim's goals and whatever, like we are trying to affirmatively, um, take some steps to make sure that we are an anti-racist district. And so I think it's important, to your point, Tina, to, to make that clear with what we're saying. But I, but at this, in a way that doesn't exclude, i- it's not saying we're only focusing on these things because we have to, um, equity means like we're looking at all of it. Um, but it, uh, but this is also something that we have as a priority for this year, so I would expect it to be somewhere in this document.
Yeah, and, and, and so Matt, what do you think of this? Working off the document that Mark put together and that, uh, that Tina edited. So I think it's fine if we have these bullet, these, these, these statements, right? And number one, develop, update, maintain policies that support an equitable education for all students could be the top level. And then a qualifying bullet underneath there, I just kind of modified it slightly from what I think you, Tina and Mark had. Say the policy, uh, we could say supplementary, to review policies for alignment with equity inclusion goals, comma, including being an anti-racist school district. And that way we highlight it, but it's, it's just that it's a highlight, but it's not, um.
It's not the only lens we're using to look at.
And, and, and I, I think if it's, I, I like succinct, top-level goals, right? Here's the goal statement. And then having one or two bullets underneath there that helps to qualify what we mean by that. I, 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 I think that's a good approach. Otherwise, our goals and our goal statements themselves being mouthfuls, are, you know, the, the simpler we can make the, the goal statement, I think is, is better in my opinion. But, and, and so I, for like, for that one, I would, I would keep the goal statement that I would recommend, you know, mentioning like the anti-racist thing in that, in that first bullet, and then I'd probably remove the second bullet, um, because it kind of, it also talks about procedures which are not part of what we do and, and, and any, any group that we want, we would listen along with, with that one. And then just say if we're, if we're gonna conduct a, uh, equity audit, then, then that would be our, the first bullet would be the qualifying thing. And then an action that we can take or we can fund, right, would be an equity audit. And then I think that's succinct enough, but I think it's, I think it hopefully addresses, uh, has some teeth to say, here are the particulars that are, you know, we're focusing on now, whether that's anti-racism or, you know, stuff like that.
You know, what do you think of that?
Um, and you know, I, for this first one, I think that that's fine and kind of how, the lens that I've been looking at this through, because one of the things, obviously as a new school committee member, you know, there's a little bit of a learning curve for me. So one thing that I've taken some time to do, um, you know, over the past week is look through all of the, you know, the resources that MASC has in terms of, you know, really diving in and understanding, you know, the difference between our roles, right? In terms of what the school committee does and what our goals are versus what the, the superintendent does. Um, and it's of course, you know, never my intention to step on toes, and if I do so accidentally, I apologize. But the, you know, kind of, the, the overarching message I got from the review of that information and that we as a school committee, you know, kind of, one lens to look at this through is kind of, what do we want the end result to be, right? So like, what, where do we want to end up? Like, what's our hope that these goals will lead us to? And then, you know, the superintendent and the administrators figure out how to get there, right? And, and so kind of looking at, at that, through that lens was, was helpful to me. And Paul, I think the way that, that you laid it out, you know, was fine. Like I said, I do, I do think there needs to be slightly more detail than just one sentence for each thing. I, I, I think that it is a little bit, it is warranted to do that, but that's just my opinion. Um, but the way that you laid it out, um, just now in terms of number one, I think sounds fine.
Every, anybody else have some input on that?
I was, I was good with way Paul modified. I think that's a nice expansion or clarification.
I'm okay with that for number one, so if.
So should I just, so we're gonna keep number one as, the, the top level as, as written.
Right, with a bullet.
Bullet, so bullet A would be policy subcommittee to review policies for alignment with equity and inclusion goals, comma, including being an anti-racist school district. So that highlights that. And then the second one would be connect, uh, conduct an equity audit, if that's something we wanna consider doing this year.
Well, we, we had actually decided that the retreat that we would be doing when Jim was gonna get us, get, start working on getting quotes and all that kind of stuff.
Right.
Yeah.
So, but we landed one.
Let's move on to number two. So it starts with provide an excellent, equitable, and current academic curriculum infused with social-emotional growth competencies. So this is kind of loaded. It's got the curriculum part, but it's also got our SEL, uh, goal in there as well.
Yeah, that was my other note, we should parse those two out. Um, and looking back at, you know, kind of the, Jim had sent me the goals from several years ago, two thousand fifteen, sixteen. And in looking at those, it kind of parsed it out that there was, you know, one goal around culture that talked a lot about the social, social-emotional piece, right? Both for, for students and that, the, the learning of the social-emotional skills, but also culturally for the school in general in terms of not just the students, but the staff and, and faculty, um, as well. And then there was another one around student achievement, uh, that, you know, kind of dove more into, you know, what are, wh- where we wanna see our students in terms of kind of that, that end game in, in their achievement, um, and whatnot. So I don't, I don't know if it would be helpful to break it out like that, because I, I, while they're intertwined, I think they, the focuses can be different.
I agree with that. You know, maybe two is, you know, a curriculum, you know, provide an excellent, equitable, and current academic curriculum, which we, uh, review periodically to understand the cycles kind of thing and have that be the curriculum goal. And then, uh, the SEL goal be number three.
Yeah.
What, what would the independent SEO goal be again, Tina?
Um, so, you know, just to kind of read from the, from, and again, this is old, um, but it talks about, um, let's see, hold on. It, it talks more about inclusivity, um, uh, which, which we addressed a little bit in our first goal. But, um, you know, extending not only to students, but administration, town boards committees in the community at large to nurture our students, uh, and that mental health should be paramount in these policy decisions. So it's looking at it through a policy lens in terms of the decisions that we would make as a committee or the recommendations that we would make as a committee regarding, um, you know, um, this didn't specify SEL. This was, you know, before we brought on the, the SEL curriculum and whatnot, so.
Right. And maybe like the higher level way to say it is like continue to, um, support and prioritize, um, the, uh, the SEL initiatives, curriculum, whatever it is that, you know, just indicating our ongoing support and, and for that and the fact that we continue to see that as a priority.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I, I guess what I was gonna say is, I, you know, listening to it, so now I remember some of the things we were doing back then, right? And I see it as an evolution that we highlighted it separately and with policy then. So I, I still think that number two is good as is, but as, we can add SEL into the sub-bullet on, on, on one, right? For policy to, to make sure that, but now it, because, because the, the phased approach, if you will, that we took with SEL is, it starts as SEL is a separate thing that we're coming in, and now you evolve to SEL is not separate, it's infused, right? And I think, so I think the number two still is important to, as a statement that SEL is not separate. It's no longer, it's an expectation now that it's integrated into everything we do and not separate. It's not, you know, I, I always find it funny when, when, you know, my kids might come back and say, well, we had SEL today. And, and that's, that's totally not the purpose of it, right? It, it's, it's how do we infuse it in the curriculum and, and our strategies and everything we do so that it has the lens, including the policy? So if it's something we still wanna emphasize in policy, we can add it, um, to the first goal, right? Um, in that, in that sub-bullet. But yeah, I, I still think it should be part of the curriculum, uh, because I think that's our next step is that we're, that it's not separate. It's, it's, it's infused, it's making sure it's infused in, in, in all of the decisions and things that we're doing.
Yeah. Well, that's true as far as curriculum goes, Paul, but, but SEL is, is appropriate in a lot of other areas too, not just curriculum, like the wellbeing of the staff and the wellbeing of the kids and, you know, the, the, um, presenters that we pay for uh, and support, you know what I'm saying? It goes beyond curriculum. So for that reason.
Bullet on its own, it's, if we're focusing on those other things, then it's, that's infused in all the things we do, not just curriculum. But how, how, how would we say it as a separate bullet, right?
Well, just to like a high level, like continue to prioritize and.
Exactly, yeah.
Social-emotional learning. I, well, we're just making a value statement.
Yeah.
Um, throughout all aspects of the district, you know?
Because I fear to your point, Paul, you're absolutely right. Like, it's not, it shouldn't be a bullet. It's not a bullet. It's something that's being infused throughout every classroom, but it's also, you know, um, SEL is a bigger picture in terms of the school culture and community, right? And how we care for our students, our staff, our faculty, and really how we care for one another. And so I think, you know, making a value statement, like Lori said, will, will give it, it's, it's kind of own space. I'm afraid that if it's, if it's coupled with curriculum, it will still be viewed as only a curriculum, um, thing where I, in, in my view anyway, social-emotional learning is, is, is part of the curriculum, right? And how we deliver, um, instruction across all settings, but it's also part of the culture of the school in general.
Yeah, so I, I guess what I would say is if it's separate value statement, then it's not just that we prioritize it, but we prioritize it being a part of all, it, it's that, I think we need to extend it to, to, to speak to the infusion part, right? That this, it's, because otherwise it's still just a thing by itself that we're saying we, we prioritize SEL, like it's this, this, this hammer we go and hit things with, right? But it's not. It's, it's how do we, in, in this one, it's saying it's infusing in curriculum, but it needs to be infused in all the things we do. And so I, I, I guess I'd support it if it was something that was stating that as a goal.
Yeah.
Is that we prioritize, you know, SEL and its continued, um, adoption, that's the wrong word, or whatever the, but it, it, it's integration into, you know, our culture, our, you know, and all the different things we do. The integration piece is, I think, the thing that is important, at least to me.
Well, well, how about like one of the, one of the old, um, goals from, uh, from years ago, uh, to reword it? What about using something like strengthen the culture of, um, social-emotional support or some phrase there that extends to not only students, administrators, town boards committees, the community at large, to, to kind of that, that big picture, that culture that, that we want of support, uh, that we want to create. And, and also I think including, uh, what was in the old one, mental health should be paramount in these policy decisions. I, I think that's an important thing to still include too, but kind of make it a, a, a broader cultural statement that, that we support, um, you know, the, the ongoing efforts to make sure that our school community, um, does meet the social and emotional needs of our students.
Mark, do you have any thoughts on?
Yeah, I mean, in, in some ways, it's another one of those things, right? I kind of agree with both of you. I mean, I will tell you that in drafting it, it was very much in line with what Paul articulated. And it was the, probably a result of some conversations of what Jen Cutler shared with us over the summer. Um, and, you know, what I know she's trying to accomplish and, and, um, that is very much an infusion model. I do think at the same time that, um, social, the social-emotional learning is a broader topic. It has other components than just the curriculum. I don't disagree with that at all. I think the question here is we're developing goals for this current school year. And, you know, is this, is there something else that during this school year we are specifically going to do or work on to further our, our SEL work? Or is the broader statement really more like some of the statements at the bottom, right? Like be ambassadors, be advocates, um, you know, it, it's almost that SEL and culture have become values with, for the district, and I think they are, and that's great. Um, so I guess I, in some ways, I think we're worried more about how we're saying it than what we're doing. And I don't wanna get lost in the, in that, in that battle over it. And I, um, if there is, i- in some ways, I could see the broad statement of having, you know, continue to support, um, the social-emotional learning models or, um, supports. And then, you know, one of the bullet points, well, how are you gonna do that? Well, we're gonna make sure the curriculum is, right, um, is infused with social-emotional concepts. So I, I think you could do it either way, but like I said, I, if it's, if we're focused on how we're communicating to the community, um, and, and not really worrying about the difference in the wording for ourselves, because we know what we're trying to do. Um, you know, I guess however people come out on that question, I'm fine with. So, you know, like I said, to me, it was, it was sort of like, where's the focus this year? Where is it? And anything in particular, I want Jen to have support for, for doing this, right? For, for pushing the infusion model. I, I think it's important to really identify that as a piece of this work for this year because she, it's gonna, maybe nobody looks at it, but I think it might be easier for her or how she might get more support from people. And look, this is a specific goal of the school committee this year, and we're going to accomplish it, right? And I think in that respect, identifying the, the sort of specific academic or curricular component, um, in some fashions. I'm not wedded, as I said over the summer, these were largely statements that helped me organize my own thoughts. Um, I'm not wedded to, you know, any of them in particular and, and, uh, if they're helping the dialogue, great. But, uh, it's a, I don't, I don't, I just don't wanna get, I don't wanna, I don't wanna lose, say, the fact that we're agreeing on the, on the ultimate.
Yeah.
Work, you know, and we're just trying to figure out how to say it.
Yeah.
So, so I, I guess I, I was just trying to take all the things we just said, and what about something like this? Prioritize the adoption, integration of social-emotional learning into our school culture, curriculum, and supports. I mean, is that kind of what we're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And is that, Paul, is that a, um, that is a separate goal statement as opposed to sort of what's written into? It's a, two would be modified sort of the focus on excellent, equitable, and, and current academic curriculum?
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I think we don't, I think we could. Yeah, I mean, I I I I think we don't, I think we could, I think it's a separate bullet, I think it's a separate top level.
Yeah.
But I don't think two necessarily needs to change either, right? You can certainly say that focuses to, on that curriculum is to infuse SEL, right? And that's, that's fine as well, right? Um, you know, so I I'm fine with either, uh, either modification of that or not modification of that, but I don't think because we put it as a separate bullet doesn't mean that this bullet can't, you know, because it's saying that it's a priority for curriculum as well, right?
Yeah, I'm fine with that approach.
I mean, so so whatever anybody wants to do with the one that with the curriculum one, I I'm fine leaving that one as written and then highlighting S the the SEL component as a top level one as well.
Well, I think we should because it is, right? I mean, we've always talked about it as one of our most most important priorities. And, um, you know, I think, yeah, whatever you said, Paul, is fine, I mean, I I drafted something similar, but I think it's, yeah, let's just.
I I wrote it down, it says prioritize the adoption integration of SEL into our school culture, curriculum and supports.
Yeah, I think that sounds great, um, you know, and in terms of addressing the SEL one, in terms of the 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 curriculum one specifically, I would love to see some language in there, kind of, you know, around improving student outcomes, so that we kind of keep our eye on, um, you know, the again, looking at it through that ends of, you know, lens of where do we want to be, right? So like continuously improving student outcomes, making sure that, you know, we're meeting all student needs, um, enclosing any achievement gaps, especially this year with COVID. I think we're still in the process of identifying what those gaps may be and and how we, how we make sure that that we close them. And so I think it's important to to add a little bit more detail there to really kind of tie it to, um, you know, improving all students outcome, all student outcomes.
Yeah.
I agree with that one.
Yeah, and and Tina, I took a little bit of a swag at, um, changing, uh, C, the 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 number, the letter C underneath there, um, to try to balance the our position and 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 I think it aligns with what you just said. So what I had, what I had adjusted, because it said, it talked about developing a periodic review of curriculum and effective data collection and and things like that. And that kind of goes to what the administrators are supposed to do, right? And from our perspective, I was wondering whether something that was more like, uh, this, develop a plan for periodic reporting on curriculum, because they're, they come up and report to us, right? Uh, including the basis for curriculum decisions, how curriculum aligns with our school committee and district goals, and how curriculum is impacting student outcomes, is what I wrote written down. And I thought that captured it, but got us out of the 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 weeds of what the 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 administrator is supposed to do. But to your point, hey, we want to hear what's going on, we want to hear how you made that decision so we can have an intelligent conversation about it, but it's not about us collecting the data.
No, no, then that 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 was exactly my point too, yeah, and these again, you know, were kind of my own, this is like a brain dump for me too, to kind of put my thoughts down here. So that's exactly what I was thinking, Paul, in terms of us better understanding what is the data and what does it mean, right? Um, so that we can best evaluate, you know, um, uh, in our decision-making process, again, what we're spending money on, any, you know, policies or whatnot that we think need to change. And so, um, but yes, again, you know, tying it to, you know, continuous student improvement and also that, um, the achievement gap piece, I think, is important, particularly for this year. In in general.
Certainly within our purview to to request the regular reporting and to ask for any details that we need to support any decisions that we need to make.
Yeah, yeah. And so, you know, kind of, look, again, I'm I'm using some of the the language that I saw from from one of the old goals document, but 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 I like how this sounds too, you know, kind of to continuously evaluate the current curriculum, um, you know, focusing on improving student outcomes, closing achievement gaps, um, and supporting a 21st century education. So that that's an old one, I'm not suggesting that we necessarily need to use that, but I kind of like the the intro of continuously evaluating, because that's our role, right? And so to to make sure that that we're clear, that, um, you know, that that's, that it I just like the language of that, just wanted to throw it out, Paul, as your wordsmithing.
Anybody else on that?
So I mean, do do we wanna, um, do we wanna, wh- wh- what were people thinking of the of the the modification to see that I did, uh, develop a plan for, develop plan for periodic reporting on curriculum, including basis for curriculum decisions, how curriculum aligns with school committee and district goals and how curriculum is impacting student, uh, outcomes, that can be reworded to how curriculum, the impact on student outcomes or something like that, but.
I'm good with that, I mean, even though it might have been in a former goal document, we're actually really not evaluating, um, it, right, like someone else's is making, um, doing all that and coming back to us with a recommendation. And then we're deciding whether we want to support that recommendation and and follow up, but we're not, we're not doing the evaluating, so.
No, no.
Yeah, so and that's why I switched it to reporting, to just have them report on to us, because at the end of the day, we can't tell the administrators to choose curriculum A or curriculum B anyway. So it's more just so they're reporting to us, hey, we made this decision, we collected this information, we think it had this im- impact on closing, closing the gaps or what what did it do for student outcomes, right?
Yeah, right. But but we do have funding decisions, right? Like we we, so so that is a piece of, and you know, and I know that we don't do the evaluation in terms of what does it look like on the ground? What are you seeing from this? What do students, we clearly aren't involved in that piece of it, but but we need to evaluate the information we get from those recommendations in terms of how we make funding decisions and whatnot. So I guess really, you know, what I'm getting at, you know, with some of this is, is, you know, kind of the, a little bit of the the process around the information that that we're using to to make some of those funding decisions and whatnot. Um, but yeah, no, we're not value, we're we're not involved in the evaluation, obviously, of on the ground.
Yeah, and and I wanna set the right expectation. The 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 discreet funding conversations we have about curriculum are few and far between. Um, it's, it's, it's not that frequent where we're talking about funding a particular piece of curriculum or, you know, where curriculum has a substantive impact on the overall budget kind of thing. So, um, I'm not, just kind of what you said, because we've said it, right, as far as funding decisions. But, um, it's, you know, it was my my sixth year, I I, it it's probably been only a couple of times where we've had discreet budgeting conversations about curriculum in that in that time, so.
Right, but to Tina's point, when we are asked to do it, we wanna make sure we have all the information that we feel is important to make our vote on the the spending or whatever it is, but, yeah.
Paul, your language sounded great, but forgive me, just because I don't have it in front of me and I'm a visual person, but did you have language around the achievement gap in there as well?
I didn't call the achievement gaps, but I said how curriculum is impacting student outcomes.
Okay.
You know, which I, you know, we talk about, uh, that's always part of Jim's Jim's goals and district goals, so I I assume that'll be always part of the conversation, I didn't call it out discreetly.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if maybe this year we should, because it's such a big piece of what what, um, with still the unknown of COVID, but.
Yeah, I think you could throw something at the end there, Paul, just says, you know, and specifically elimination of of achievement gaps, you know, at the end, right after you've.
How about, uh, and how curriculum is impacting student outcomes, um, and, uh,
Reduction of.
And and how impacting impacting student outcomes and, uh,
I mean, and it really kind of what I'm thinking here is, is any potential learning loss because of COVID, right? I mean, the term achievement gaps can mean something a lot bigger than than really what we're talking about. So I don't know, to be honest with you, if that may, now that I'm thinking about it and we're talking about it, that that's the right term to use, um.
Yeah, and and that's what I was struggling with, because achievement gaps is a kind of a
It's a bigger concept, yeah, it's a bigger concept than I'm trying to apply here, so I don't know that that's the right phrase, but.
It's it's equally as broad as student outcomes, right? Because what are we talking about? We're talking about COVID related, we're talking about socioeconomic gaps, talking about, you know, just in in general gaps, um, but did, but I I also don't think we wanna, unless it's something we can discreetly tie to something, um, more ge- more general, I think, is better here, and then that finds its way into
Yeah.
uh, the blueprint or Jim's goals.
Yeah, well, because if we're focusing on outcomes, and obviously it's the outcomes for every student, so some of them will have to have those issues addressed, so, yeah.
And and Erin, you've been a little quiet, your thoughts on this?
I don't know that I have necessarily much to add than what you all have been saying, to be honest, um. I think the achievement gap one is hard, because we do wanna sort of highlight, I I, I'm pretty sure, and maybe, I know Jim's not on, but maybe some of our building administrators. The teachers can tell the, or from what I've heard, they're seeing an issue even getting into the rhythm of the school year and not being able to teach at the speed that they usually would. Not necessarily gaps that were already there because of either learning, like, I feel like they can differentiate between the two, and should we then delineate between the two in our goals? So I don't know if, you know, Kelly or Deej or Claudia, Pete, do you have any ideas on that? Like that there is a distinction between what we've heard of, what like what we heard about from Dr. Kyra last week, uh, as far as sort of like the on-ramping for the year, achievement gaps and and what that's causing versus the residuals from the prior year, or is it just kind of altogether?
My my opinion is that they are all together. Um, you know, at the war, and I do have the advantage where we are the K two schools, so we have, you know, not the youngest learners in the district, Sarah has that. But our second graders have never experienced a normal school year, they they were part of the group that closed in March. Um, so we're talking about kindergartners, first graders that have never known what it's like to sit next to other children and work with people and to be cooperative. Um, so when we're talking about the academic skills and the gaps that are present, yes, those are there, there's also some strengths that we're seeing as well. Um, but we're, you know, the social emotional learning and all those skills that go in and Paul, to a point from earlier, you know, SEL isn't just a lesson, it's everything that we're doing throughout all of our days and how we've made the shift to responsive classroom at the elementary level. Um, we're working on just developing children about how to be part of of a society and about how to work to each other, and how to just, on top of that, our teachers are assessing the academic skills and developing interventions for our students that are behind. So Erin, the the quick answer is yes, um, we're looking at all of that together.
And and.
And I see a lot of head shaking, so I, you know, I I I think you're all dealing with the same issue. And I guess that, again, remem- remembering what this is about, like if we're putting something in here that we're hope to figure out this year, right? Like, are we asking Jim and his goals and through Jim, the administrators? Are we meeting students like where they're at and just sort of taking it from there? Or we, I like identifying gaps, um, and spending time trying to define, you know, where they should be versus where they are? And, you know, have we even figured out what we're asking?
Yeah. Yeah.
One of my, I mean, one of my concerns about getting into this is, um, I think it's different at all levels, I'm sure what Kelly is seeing may be sort of similar root causes, but it plays out in different ways. And when you talk about achievement gaps of of any kind, and I'm using that term very generically, it probably plays out in a much different way at the middle school and high school where subject matter changes, right? When you're at the high school and you've got, kind of, one subject is ninth grade social studies, a different one at sophomore year and junior and senior year, you're not talking about the substantive gap, or whatever it was, it is, because it's not being, it's not sequential, right? I mean, there's some sequentiality to it, but I I guess my overall sense is, we know this work is going on, right? We know that that Jim and Mike and all our building principals are on top of this, they're working on it. And, you know, I I guess I question, is this something that is important enough in terms of our goal statement?
Yeah.
To worry about, because it's gonna happen whether we put in a goal statement or not.
Yeah.
And so, you know, what what do we feel like we're gaining by being specific or more precise in a goal statement? It's gonna make a difference, whether that's how we communicate with our community, which is obviously important, how we make our own decisions, or is this just something we can look at and say, you know what, you know what it means, everybody knows what it means, what needs to happen is happening? And let's, let's kind of, um, you know, make a decision on on the goal statement, either as proposed by Paul or an amended version of that and and let people continue their work.
Yeah, no, I think, you know, to to kind of keep it at that big picture level, you know, tying it to student outcomes is really the important piece. But, you know, the, and and I think, obviously, you know, we all have faith in in our administrators, they are, they're doing what they need to do, and and student outcomes is what it's all about, and the outcome for this, each student will be different depending upon their needs. And so I think, you know, but I I I'm comfortable with leaving our goal at that level.
I mean, I'm uncomfortable with what Paul expressed before.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, so if if we're gonna, are we leaving the the high level wording the same? So the 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 top level being bright, excellent, equitable, private and excellent, equitable and current academic curriculum infused social emotional growth competencies, um, as, are we leaving that?
I'm comfortable with that.
So wait a minute, I'm confused, because I thought you broke that into two separate ones.
Well, so that's, so that's the top bullet, so.
Oh, okay, okay, what you were discussing was, I'm sorry, misunderstood.
Right, so so and then having, uh, the letter A, the the sub-bullet be developed plan for periodic, uh, reporting on curriculum, including the basis for curriculum decisions, how the curriculum aligns with school committee and district goals and how, um, curriculum is impacting student outcomes would be the sub-bullet, it'd be the clarifying or, um, or or sub-bullet there. I I guess one of the other things about this one is, this one had many sub-bullets and and I know that the intent was not to have that many, not saying that it's case, but, and even if we truncate this and keep a couple, I think having those are important, because then when we go to do goals for Jim or we're talking about the blueprint, those all come into play, right? But what else, what else would be a priority enough to be a sub-bullet there? Or, um, conducting the equity audit was also a sub-bullet in here, so I don't know if that's, you know, it's different in that an equity audit for a policy is different than, you know, uh, than curriculum. So it's probably still relevant.
I think the rest of them, Paul, are 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 really more task-oriented rather than goal-oriented, and I don't think they need to be specifically expressed personally.
Okay, I had a question about one of them, and, um, I know it was legacy probably, and, um, but update the district's technology plan? So I was curious as to what that means to people. Um, because the the, given what's happened over the last year, right? Um, it may be appropriate to put something in there about technology, because we went through, uh, went from a point of probably very erratic or in, uh, inconsistent use of technology to boot camp, you know, a technology of like, everybody needs to learn it. And, you know, now we're gonna, we should be backing off to a, to the appropriate level, and do we have anything, we want to put in something that speaks about, you know, having that on our radar collectively as a district, to find that right place where technology fits into curriculum.
So I can share with you what my thinking was in putting this in here, um, was a lot of the same kind of things you're referring to, which is recognizing that we were, we debated for a while whether we wanted to be a one-to-one district, what that meant, why we were doing it. Um, now we're probably, you know, not not one to two, but we we got enough equipment, right?
We're one-to-one.
What, yeah, no, I know, I was wondering whether we're like one to one and a half. Um, and, you know, so I think that the thought process was recognizing that staff members now have found places where they're using technology differently. Do we need to be looking at, particularly at the budget season, some sort of different commitment to our technology, equipment, resources, softwares, whatever that that is, to support the different work that that we're doing with technology going forward? Um, you know, that that plus the idea that we now have tons of Chromebooks, we have enough, as you say, for everybody to have one. Um, but to maintain that, we have to invest in that. And I know I I'm fairly confident Paul Carpenter has a pretty good idea of what that looks like, um, but rather than sort of saying, Um, but rather than sort of saying, okay, we have one time funds, let's go buy three hundred Chromebooks, we're better off having a plan that says, okay, I mean, you know, we need to invest fifty thousand dollars a year in maintaining current equipment because some of them are gonna, some of them are gonna stop working, right? At a certain point in time, we have to have replacement. So it was, it was kind of the the thought of looking at where we are now with technology, understanding what our demands are that are new. Um, and making sure we as a committee are financing around those needs coming forward.
And Mark, to that point, part of some of the technology discussions are actually part of the new communication director's role as far as, even though it's, you know, even though our role is comms, right? We've talked about it being this sort of brand user experience consistency across the digital platforms. And so I do think that's probably something that we should put as a goal related to technology, um, around that. That i- in combination with what you were saying, um, around the the actual assets.
Yeah. So so what 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 did you think about that? Would this capture it? As as you were speaking, Mark, I kind of tried to capture it. Responsibly and appropriately utilize technology within curriculum and develop a sustainable technology budget.
I think that captures the thought. I don't know that I felt the need to draw it out as I mean, like you can put that as a as a bullet point, but I don't know if we need to even articulate that bullet point within the context of of what we're doing is goal statements. I think that's an appropriate sort of to do as to how do we accomplish the goal. Um, and I'm happy to retain it and and, you know, utilize it as a good statement of what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah.
Um, I just didn't feel, I don't feel the need to sort of consider that as top level thought personally.
Well, you're not a top level, but a sub bullet, would it would it be a sub bullet underneath, um, the the this curriculum goal?
I'm I'm fine either including or not.
I mean, I think if we include that, where there's other things we're gonna have to include that are would be equally, um, important. And so kind of with the with the thought of since we've all, we're all seem to be on the same plan that at least for this process in this year, that that's something, you know, short and concise. And so, um, I I would think leaving that bullet off and really focusing on curriculum. Um, you know, the social emotional piece and in the other bullet around student achievement that you articulated earlier. I would be comfortable with that as this specific goal, but again.
I would agree with that too. I mean, we haven't really heard from Paul yet. Or Jim, you know, what what they're thinking, you know, moving forward. So I I mean, it's, I think it's just gonna be taking up space in that until we have a clear idea about where we're headed.
Yeah, the only, the only thing is, you know, I think the the development of a sustainable bu- technology budget is critically important, right? We just got infused with the the worst thing, and if anybody's ever had to deal deal with life cycle budgeting and stuff like that for assets, right? Large purchases suck because it'll be cyclical. It means in in a few years, you better come up with that same large budget item. And so you have to develop a plan around it. And I I know I probably sound like a broken record as I've said this at school meetings before. So I'm fine if we remove it. I I do think though, this is one of those things where is more in our realm to understand how and ask the questions of how this fits into our budget in a sustainable way. That, okay, we talked about being a one to one district, right? And that was always like, okay, if we want to get there, let's develop a plan. That got accelerated because of last.
Why don't we put that under budget, Paul? Because I think it would be appropriate to put there. It feels less appropriate under the curriculum piece. I I don't, I don't feel like it fits there. And if we were gonna highlight technology for uh, in the curriculum realm, I think there are a lot of other things that we may want to talk about and highlight. So in in the, um, the interest of kind of keeping it as focused as possible. I think that might be more appropriate, um, to the point you're making to put it under the budget one.
You know, I almost see it as a combination where what Paul's talking about as far as the asset and the budget piece absolutely would be. But for the curriculum piece, it's because we've, we did sort of flip the switch much quicker than we intended to. It has changed how curriculum is delivered and what curriculum is chosen, right? There's things that are being assigned on a Chromebook for homework to Griffin that five years ago would never have been considered homework for Chase. And it's just because COVID accelerated the leveraging of this technology in the home environment. And so how do, and I'm not sure necessarily how to word it, but that like just an awareness of the technol- the quick technological advance and the impact to curriculum choice, application, delivery. Something like that.
Yeah, I I'm I'm all about keeping it simple. So I'm I'm totally okay with going either way. Um, like I said, the the way I phrase responsibly and appropriate utilize technology within curriculum kind of speaks, I think, to what you were saying. Erin is that that's thematic and let's, let's get it right now that we had to. We went from one end of the spectrum to the other end of the spectrum and let's figure it out.
You kind of leverage those lessons learned. In other words, is that what you're talking?
But but I I'm all, I I'm 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 more on the on the on the end of the hey, I I a very short, sweet thing. So I don't want this to be a a big one. Um, so I'm fine either way. I I, um, this this can be one of the bullets that we retain for goals in Jim's thing or in in there. Um, but I I do think it's an important distinction that we really hit the the gas pedal on developing and utilizing technology, probably over utilizing technology because we had to over the last year. How do we make sure now revisit it as a as appropriate? And then how do we budget it going forward? So I'm fine if we just leave this this goal as we stated, have the the one about uh, the periodic review, reporting a curriculum, that whole sub bullet. And we also had con- conduct an equity audit and had make sure the equity audit pertains to curriculum. And just having those two bullets is fine by me as well, but, um, it's whatever the group thinks.
Did you propose a separate bullet around social emotional learning or what was I misunderstanding that?
So the way it current, we we currently discussed it is we're not modifying the top level. So we separated out and we have another height. So it, so here are the, here are the goals we went over. Develop, update and maintain policies to support an equitable educational, uh, education for all students. That's number one. Number two, I just put it in number two, but, uh, but because we talked about it second is prioritize the adoption and integration of SCL uh, into our school culture, curriculum and supports.
Okay.
As a top level.
Got you.
And then we, at least to this point, have kept provided excellent, equitable and current academic curriculum infused with social emotional growth competencies. Um, we left that SCL as part of that top level one, two. Um, and then have the sub bullet for the reporting on curriculum and stuff. And then there's also, um, the can, yeah, and I'm assuming we would want to keep the equity audit one in there to ensure that the equity audit address curriculum. So if we want to just keep it at those two sub bullets, I'm good with that. If we want to throw the technology one in there, that's fine by me too. I I think it's appropriate, but I'm also the more succinct, short, sweet. I like that stuff too, so.
And land on the side of just having the two, but.
I would tend to agree.
I'm good with that. I'll I'll leave it. I'll leave it as, uh, one further down. And and what I'll do is I'll color code this and and send it out to everybody. So we know what we talked about. Not that I, I guess I inadvertently became the scribe of this, but.
And so then there were the the third and the fourth ones, right, that um, that are on there. I don't know if anybody had feedback on either of those. Actually, I should say the one, the one thing I saw, sorry, bottom of the rope is, um, I think the phrasing on three contains one one thing that I was concerned about, because I don't think it's a appropriate way to represent the goal is, um, talks about routine, high quality and diverse staff. And it makes it sound like, um, certain staff are diverse and certain aren't, and that's not the goal. It's really to retain a high quality and diverse staff. Meaning that they're all high quality and collectively they are diverse, so then hiring diverse people, which I think is
Yes, so right.
Somewhere between insulting and racist.
Yeah, yeah, we want, we want our goals to be anti racist, right?
Right.
Um, so right now it says, uh, adopt policies and budget positions to attract, develop and retain high quality. And, uh, so you want a high qual-, um.
Yeah, a a high quality and diverse faculty and staff.
So just that it's the addition of A, am I right?
Yeah.
So that that was the, that was the next goal. And underneath that, there was the equity audit.
So which leads me to, you know, and I know we're trying to like limit the amount of goals, but since conducting equity audit is a bullet under just about every other, um, goal that we have. And we really already did talk about it in the summer and asked Jim to do it. And it was, and I thought it would be better to have like just one overarching equity audit goal, something like engage in an equity audit to assess issues of equity and inequity across all academic and operational aspects of the district and commit resources to implement the recommended changes. Like, is it better to make it stand out since it's really a thing rather than having it just be a sub bullet?
I think that's a great idea, Lori.
I I I like.
Does it matter?
I like your thing. I would just add policy to that.
Yeah.
In in your list of things.
Okay.
Because I I think that's, that would then reflect where we're putting the bullet. Uh, so either the bullet is, it either it's in there where we were doing it, which says the equity audit has to hit these bolt things, or we put it as a high level thing that has them all in a list like you.
Yeah, well, I think we're moving forward as if it's a high level thing. We we asked for it, we're expecting it. And we've put it as a subset under every single goal. So, I mean, it's it's
No, if if you have already written that down, check that over and we'll, we'll merge it in and
Yeah.
I mean, at least, you know.
Yeah.
Erin hasn't, Erin hasn't chimed in, but.
Erin? Are you there? Are you good with that?
I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't following that last piece. It was flying past, sorry.
Well, I mean, Lori, you want, you wanna?
Yeah, really, Erin, just because as I was going through and like under every category was was at conduct equity audit. I was trying, number one, thinking that that was kind of more, one of the more important things that we're doing this year. Um, and I thought it maybe it deserved its own goal rather than being a subcategory under all the other goals. I mean, at the end of the day, I guess it doesn't matter, but.
I I agree with that. And well, one thing I didn't mention earlier that came up, we talked about current curriculum. Um, and I didn't know if current, the word current, and also this relates to the equity audit. But we talk, we're talking about, and I like, I don't know a better word for it, but like our curriculum should be getting more woke. For lack of a better word, right? We're not just talking about like the pilgrims of the Indian sat down and had an ice meal. Like, we're talking about like what really happened, what really happened with Columbus, what really happened with our, uh, the native people of this country. Um, what really had, you know, finally talking about Tulsa bombings that have never been broached in, um, you know, modern American history. So how do we make sure that as far as equity, the equity and access to actual historical records that have not been shaped by some school association in Texas, uh, you know, writing our textbooks? I don't know, does that fall in with the equity piece or is that more like the curriculum piece and the quote unquote current?
So Erin, what I think you're getting at, I mean, the way I see that unfolding, it's not sort of how like we kind of decided like what needs to be explored. But we're saying we need an equity audit. And if that come comes back to us with some issues or problems in our curriculum and our policies and our whatever, then I think then it's then up to Mike to, um, make a recommendation how to change that in the buildings.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that we can, you know, have input on because he'll be coming to our meeting and reporting it to us rather than us deciding now where we're falling short. I mean, I think that's kind of the purpose of the audit. Do you guys?
No, I would agree. And just want to point out, Erin, that a lot of this is, has already been done, especially particularly at the high school level. I know there's been a lot of discussion in in really kind of a taking a good look. I know just, you know, from the perspective of my own high schooler, the way he's learning American history and the conversations we've had is very woke. If that's the term you want to use, right? I mean, I think there's already a lot of work happening on this. It's been ongoing. And it's evident as a parent that it's been ongoing, which I really appreciate. And so I think, um, you know, to to Lori's point, the equity audit will will pick up on maybe any pieces that we missed. Um, if if they're still out there, um, you know, there's always room for improvement. And so I think, you know, taking a close look is is a smart, is always a smart thing to do. Uh, but it is already being done. I know it's part of, um, you know, the the work that started. Well, you know, with the the initiatives to become an anti racist district, which I I haven't been a part of any of them. I just know from from the parent perspective and kind of seeing it from the outside that, um, and hearing, you know, reports um, of the work that had been done last year, that, um, it is definitely, um, in process.
Yeah, I know Kelly's, you're like, you've haven't had a team working on it for a while, right, Kelly? Yeah. So, anybody have anything else to say about that?
Yes, so I guess based on everything we've talked about, maybe that becomes the number one. And so with the addition of policy, it would read engage in an equity audit to assess issues of equity and equity across all policy, academic and operational aspects of the district and commit resources to implement recommended changes or initiatives. Everybody good with that? That's Lori's wording aside from just adding the policy.
I think that sounds fine.
Cool. And remove the conduct equity audit bullet from sub bullet from the other ones. Is that what we're doing?
Yeah. And then are we ready to talk about number four, the communication goal?
So we didn't, we just started to talk about the adopt policies and budget positions to attract, develop and retain a high quality and diverse, uh, faculty and staff. Um, did we want, there were, uh, two remaining sub bullets that were part of.
I do like those bullets.
Do we want?
I think they're just, they're just tasks, you know, there there's things of the means of the end though.
Um, yeah.
You know, so I, my preference at a goal level would be not to include them.
That, that's, I definitely can support that.
With that, I I think, I think it stands on its own that that's our goal and I I think it stands, it doesn't need qualification. So I don't think we need a sub bullets. And and then now we're onto that, the the communication strategy.
So I guess to me, there's two parts of that. First of all, we've just hired someone. So again, like giving it some time for that person to evaluate. I mean, we've taken an action step in making that decision. And, uh, um, so rather than spend too much, for at least for me, you know, I'm looking to see what that audit of hers will be and what recommendations of hers will be. Uh, whether or not as a committee, we want to do different things with communication than than we've been doing as a group or either as individuals. I mean, I'd leave, leave the district stuff to the, our new hire. Um, and then maybe if there's something that we personally want to accomplish, um, in terms of how we interact with the public. Um, I did get a message from Ann Canton about the website. Um, and she's told me that a number of people now have signed up to receive our um, our messages from school committee, but we're not really, you know, we don't have any content on there yet. So, um, you know, at some point, if we want to make decisions about what we want to provide for that listserv. Um, this could be a good place for that.
Yeah, yeah, my thought in kind of thinking about this, um, the communication piece is, you know, that for for what we as a committee can do is kind of work together in coordination with the new director of communication, really to kind of enhance our our own communication with the community, right? In terms of how we use, I know that we have social media platforms. Um, the, just the, the information that's on our webpage and that, you know, that email list and kind of look at those capabilities in coordination with her, obviously. Cause she will be kind of conducting her own audit, figuring out district, you know, procedures, whatever. There's, there's a whole bunch that will need to be done. Um, but to to leverage having her in the district to further our ability, um, as a school committee to to establish that line of communication with the community.
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, just to, this would be, uh, goal six. Um, we have five now, um, with the other ones. And so I would, as it was written, because we just hired somebody, um, I wouldn't support. I wouldn't support what we were, where where we were going with what, because it was too I can't think of a softer word, but it was kind of dictating. Whereas we just hired someone who's supposed to be, you know, a subject matter expert in this area. And so I would, if we had something, I would go more along lines of, I think I just heard from both of you of, you know, how do we support and seek guidance and collaboration with her? So I would either be wanting to say something like that or just back off of this from our goals to not be presumptuous presumptuous and let her get her, get herself integrated in the district to see where she can improve things and come back to us and seek direction from her at that point, right? So I'm, I'm, I'm kind of not sure whether if I were just writing the goals, whether I would include it or not, but if I would include it, I would probably go the direction, I think where you two were just going that it's more about letting her get integrated in the district and start collaborating with how and and seek guidance and work with her to develop something, but I don't know that we could, we could right now articulate a goal that's more concise than that because that's whole, the whole reason we we hired her, right?
We met a goal, we met a communications goal by by making this higher. But Mark, I mean, you weigh in because I know communication is really important to you.
Yeah, no, I mean, when I think when I drafted this is before we made the decision to hire her.
Yeah.
Right? So, um, so in that respect, I fully agree with you. I think it probably is wise to think about rephrasing this not as a district-wide communication strategy, because I agree with Paul's comments, I think predominantly, but everybody that, this is what we hired somebody else to do. But I do think it's appropriate to kind of come up with something that reflects the committee's role in in the arena of communication. And so maybe that is in instead of update district-wide communication strategy, it is sort of update committee committees communication strategy or something like that, which in my mind would be heavily informed by recommendations of the person we just hired, um, where she's coming to us almost and saying, look, this is where you guys can be really effective. And, you know, then we would do something like that. I think it's just sort of taking our ownership over a a smaller piece of the communication question, which is really about what we should be doing as a group of five. Rather than trying to suggest that somebody else effectively do your job, right? I don't need to, I don't need a goal that says that.
What about like work with the communications professional to optimize our ability to communicate with the district? Is that too broad?
No, I, um.
While Mark was talking, I did, I did kind of try to write.
Of course.
Well, you don't listen to what I say, you just type during, right?
I I I I must listen a little bit because you haven't told me I was way off yet. But collaborate with Director of Communications on how to develop and improve school committee communications.
Something that works, yeah.
Good with that.
That says, you know, work with her to determine our own, you know, not a district-wide thing, which is probably that's a two-year process for her to evaluate and do anyway, right? But something that says that, I mean, I just jotted it down, so happy to modify.
Yeah, no, that was exactly my thought, Mark, in terms of the communication piece, that it's not, it's the district piece has been addressed, but what can we as a school committee do to enhance our communication and connection with the community?
I think what Paul's doing there is he's written all of what he thought over the last week and he just waits for one of us. I just wrote this.
Yeah.
The the only one I pre-wrote was actually the the, uh, the curriculum reporting one. That was the only one.
Swear, Paul.
I'm good with that communication recommendation. And by the way, what Ann Canton said she would upload in the meantime, if everybody's okay with this is the minutes from our meetings will go, uh, will go out to anybody.
And I assume the agendas?
Um, yes.
Okay, so
All right, we're good with that. So that was kind of the top, uh, the priorities that everybody said one through four, and I guess we added, what do we have, six, Paul? Because we made SEL its own and we added the equity one as a separate, so. Do people feel the need to continue? I mean, I feel like the rest of these are really just spelling out what we already do, you know?
I think, I think we already kind of just agreed to dismiss those, right?
Yep.
Yeah, and you know, one, one thing that I brought up earlier, and I don't know that it's appropriate for the goals are just appropriate, you know, kind of for us um, as individual members, but just in terms of kind of our own professional development, um, you know, kind of one of the things that I was mentioning earlier and and really, you know, for me, some of this, um, but it surrounds around foundational skills and, you know, in learning, when I talk about like the the thoughts about understanding, you know, um, curriculum, and I'm not talking about a specific curriculum product, you know, but just talking about just in general, um, you know, kind of the learning process and what is in specifically with foundational skills. There is a lot of very well-established research around, um, you know, what works and and are we employing those things? And so I I think for our own understanding to be able to to have those informed discussions, you know, with our administrators, I I think it would be important to for us to at least discuss, you know, whether or not this should be a goal for us as a committee.
Tina, I agree with the thought. Um, I guess I just would think about it as, you know, one of those bullet points under probably the curriculum goal. Right? As opposed to, because it feels like it's a, it's a means towards that end or it's a, it's a step towards that goal. And I guess it goes back to the question of what little detail do we want? But I don't know that I would see it as a standalone goal statement. It doesn't, as I said, I'm I'm not as, not as hung up on the on the form that we come up with as much as as I am. You know, making sure that we're actually following through and keeping some, keeping ourselves honest to that, right?
Yeah.
Making sure we actually do it.
Yeah.
As opposed to, oh, well, we forgot to put a goal, never mind, you know?
No, and and that's reasonable. It's why I think I'm just kind of throwing it out there for discussion of whether or not it 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 is something that anybody else thinks needs to be part of the goals or or where it might fit into our own conversations.
I'm thinking, Tina, at least what I think what I'm hearing you say is maybe education for us so we understand more about curriculum and things like that. Is that kind of what you're?
Yeah, kind of, I mean.
Am I oversimplifying that? And I guess my only, um, concern, I mean, there's nothing wrong with us understanding as much as we can about anything, but just getting into a territory where we're overstepping, like our job is more to hire the people that understand about curriculum more than it is about us understanding. And I understand your point, like how can you vote on something to, you know, spend money on a budget if you don't fully understand it? I mean, there are things that we can do down the road, like if we, there are committees that do, uh, curriculum subcommittees, you know, and that could be an opportunity if this committee decides we want to do that at some point uh, and have, um, you know, a member from the committee sit on the subcommittee and then reporting back to the full committee about what you learn. I mean, I think that's happens more when you're in doing like a deep dive and a deep review and maybe we'll decide at some point that that's necessary. But I guess I just like want to be careful about investing in things that aren't fully our job. But that doesn't mean we can't understand more than we do. Is that fair?
No, absolutely, absolutely. And I'm just, you know, just thinking about, you know, different, you know, presentations, part you know, potentially for the school committee to help us as from outside people as well, too, to help us understand some, you know, some bigger picture things. Again, I don't it by any means want to to step on toes, and I know that I'm still new with this and I certainly under my intention, so I certainly.
No, no, no.
Yeah, appreciate, appreciate the check. And I have immense, um, you know, trust in our administrators. I think they have our students' best interest at heart without question. That's never ever questioned. I just think as it it's, it's part of our duty to to be informed. And so it's just something that I think is important for us to talk about. I don't think it's required that we put it in our goals. I just think it's an important conversation to kind of continue to have as we move through different things.
Does anybody else have any thoughts on that?
Yeah. I would certainly be more interested in learning more than I know. To be more effective in that arena going forward regardless of how we sort of document that as a potential goal or task.
All right, did we finish these goals?
So the only thing I'm going to say, Lori, is if if I had my way, we will have this done next summer at our retreat. I I really feel like
Yes.
Our retreats have, um, they they start with more stuff in them than we have, you know, real opportunity to go through and sometimes we get, I don't know, this happened this year necessarily, but we get things we get into the weeds on or something to just take more time and I really think, um, you know, this conversation has shown how much conversation you can have. We'd already spent several hours on this over the summer.
Right.
But I really think we've got to make a commitment to ourselves for next summer to be in a better position by September one.
Hundred percent. It's the first thing that gets pushed off and, um, and now we see what's happening.
Well, but but I think this, we 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 led off here with a talk about what it is and and a process to get there, and I think that's helped, you know? You know, so I I just wanted to show, uh, so I I created a new document that had and pulled out the what we discussed. So this, um, this is, this is the six, um, the the six items that we just did, so I'll I'll save this off and I'll I'll send it out. And then it can be put in a pretty, uh, pretty thing to be put on the on the website.
Are we ready to vote this?
We need to vote it.
Are we ready to do that tonight?
Let's not make this, this whole thing last one second longer than.
I I I move that, uh, we approve and adopt the school committee goals for for our school year twenty-one, twenty-two as developed.
Second.
All in favor, Tina?
Hi.
Erin? I don't hear you or see you, Erin, but I'm going to take that as a yes. There you are.
She's there.
Paul?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
An I for me. Thank you, everybody. That was, and thank you all for your patience, all of you who are tuning in, watching this.
They're not watching anymore.
Well, you know, pretending to, whatever, we get it.
They're having trouble sleeping, they're not anymore.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, just, you know, good thing you didn't have to sit through two full days of a retreat. Where it started. All right, next up, the M A S C resolutions. So who had a chance to look through those today?
I did.
I skimmed it.
I did, yeah. Mark, I mean, do you want to go through them one by one or do you want to point out the ones that might be problematic?
I think we've gone through them one by one in the past. I guess it really depends on whether people are ready to kind of make decisions on them. They're, um, to attain for your context, that at the conference in November, there is a delegate assembly, uh, which these are all taken up by representatives of um, any school committee that wishes to send an individual and each committee gets one vote on it. So we have historically gone through this, um, decided what our positions, the committee would be appointed someone usually me to be that delegate representative. And then depending on how things go, we are represented there or not. There's sometimes that the week gets in the way and and I'm not able to stay for it. I think, I don't know, they're changing the timing on this year. I'm not sure when it's going to be in the conference. But, um, so I think we need to go through it at some point, one by one. But we
I think we have one more meeting before the, uh, retreat. So who's, it it, are there people that aren't ready to talk about it tonight? Because then we can just put it off to the next meeting. Or are there people that would like to just get through it and get it done?
I would prefer to put it off so that I can read them more closely because I wasn't quite sure. I didn't realize that we would be voting on this tonight. I thought we were just going to be discussing which resolutions are coming up, so. If that, if that's okay, I prefer to put it off.
Yeah, let's, let's punt, let's just nominate Mark and we can punt the discussion of it.
Yeah. Are you willing to do it again, Mark? Mark has volunteered because he's
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I anticipate that I'll be down there for the vast majority of the conference that I'm given that I'm on the M A S C board. So, you know, this is, at at the time, this is ongoing. I don't believe there's anything else going on. So, um, I'd probably be there anyway. I'm I will, I'm happy to serve as our delegate or some representative.
Yeah, so everybody just take a look at them and then we can go, you know, try to get through it as quickly as possible the next time, yes, no. These are recommendations that M A S C has already, like, they've sifted through those and these are things that they want to. Or maybe the other people are are making recommendations to them. Not really sure, Mark, you probably know more about how they
Yeah, I can, processes that the the M A S C solicits proposed resolutions.
Yeah.
When you look at them, you see, for example, the first one is proposed by the Framingham School Committee.
Okay.
They've all, they've always been very active. They get, um, the ones that are proposed get submitted to a resolutions committee. Um, and considered at that level, the resolutions committee then reviews, um, all of them along with the ones that are proposed by the M A S C Board of Directors. Um, and then submits recommendations to the Board of Directors, which has voted to approve these. Um, not, it doesn't necessarily reflect an endorsement, but it reflects a, um, a decision to put it to the delegate assignment.
Right, they're willing to put it forward. And and the topics like run the gamma, like there's one on there about extending recess. And then there's another one about electric buses.
And wifi and
And yeah, so, you know, uh, let's do that next time, uh, after everyone has had a chance to take a look and we can, um, save everybody from having to listen to more of that. So Paul, do you have any warrant approvals?
Well, but, you know, I I would still move to appoint Mark as the voting.
Oh, you can do that.
At the twenty-twenty-one M A S C M A S S, right? It's, it's in the mo- in the motion, it's spelled wrong, but M A S C M A S S annual business meeting on, um, Saturday, November sixth, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor, Tina?
Hi.
Erin? Paul?
Hi.
Mark?
Right.
An I for me, thank you.
You guys are all on a state of Saturday to keep me company, right?
Just like we always do.
Yeah.
I just know.
Same as last year.
So I I need to contact Karen and cancel my reservation, but I have to be in Atlanta for a meeting, um, November first through fifth, so.
Okay. So you will not be the delegate. But you can have a voice on what you want your delegate to, uh, vote for at our next meeting. Do you have warrant approvals, Paul?
I do. Uh, between September twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one and October seventh, twenty-twenty-one, I, Paul Kendall, authorized by my signatures payables in the amount of four hundred, two thousand, two hundred, twelve dollars and twenty-seven cents. This includes general fund expenses of hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred, forty-six dollars and five is of thirty thousand, six hundred, fifty-five dollars. I also signed off on one million, two hundred, thirty-four thousand, eighty-two dollars and forty-seven cents of payroll.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the minutes, we have August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one minutes. Does anybody have anything on that? That was the forum with all of the feedback on masks. Great job on the minutes, whoever did them.
I think it was Karen.
Karen, thank you. If there are no issues, I'll take a motion.
Move to approve as presented.
Second. All in favor, Erin? Tina?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
I, and then the August twentieth, twenty-twenty-one on our subsequent vote. Any issues? I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Erin? Tina?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And then gifts and donations. Did anybody else get that email besides me? For the gifts and donations? Well, I'm just, I'm gonna do my best. I'm just having trouble reading it. It's so small. Um, like, and I can't seem to.
Would you want to email it to me? I can read it real quick.
Uh, I think I've got it. Um, there is a donation to Planet Aid in the amount of two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty cents from the clothing donation bin rituals. Residuals, and that that's the only one. So do I have a a motion to accept that?
Moved.
It moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, Tina?
Hi.
Erin? Mark?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Okay. And then. do we have any committee reports?
Uh, well, last night I, was my first ASH PAC meeting, um, as the school committee representative, and there was a wonderful presentation by um, the folks at Desi who are working very closely with Kathy in the district and our um tiered focus monitoring. So they gave a a kind of apparent overview of, of what that process entails, what it looks like, and, and did a wonderful job of answering questions from from parents um on ASH PAC around, um, you know, kind of the process, where we are, what it looks like, that type of thing. Um, so it was great to be able to, to be there, to hear all of that information as well. And um, and then also found out that next Thursday, they're having the Lighting the Way um, presentations and award, which I'm really happy to hear is moving forward in person um, at the middle school at the activities room. So um, so that's a, a, a good thing to look forward to as well, too.
Awesome, thank you, Tina. Anybody else?
Uh, so since our last meeting, we did uh, go out to bid with the early packages uh on the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth, we submitted the sixty percent construction documents to the MSBA. Uh, and so yesterday, there was a bidder walkthrough on the site primarily for the, for the set, potential site contractors that'll be bidding. Uh, and they have until next week to submit any requests for information, and I believe the bids are due the twentieth for this round of uh bids.
Got it?
I think so.
Okay, thank you. All right, guys, next up, any, the action items are the same as they've been. I'm not going to list anything and I will move to enter into executive session under MGL Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A three to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining for litigation and open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, so I so declare, and not to return to open session regarding the teachers, paraprofessionals, clerical employees, nurses, and custodian and maintenance employees, and then we will adjourn. So do I have a second?
Second.
And then I'll take roll call, Mark?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And yes for me, and do all you have your links for the executive session meeting?
Yes.
All right, everybody else, thank you. Good night. Thanks for hanging in with us. Have a good rest of your week. See you later.